And with that, roll call.
Councilmember Brotman here. Agajanian.
President.
Kasakin.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
And Mayor Devine.
Here. Thank you. And what's next, please?
The agenda for the Tuesday, April 20th, 2021, Special Public Meeting of the City Council, was posted on April 14th, 2021, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And the next item?
One would be Community Development regarding selection of a proposer in a response to city's request for proposals for the management and operation of the Alex Theater and direction to negotiate a lease and management agreement, a motion selecting a proposer in response to the city's request for proposals and directing the staff to negotiate a lease and management agreement for the Alex Theater.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, good afternoon. Mayor Devine, members of City Council. I'm just going to turn it over to Phil Lanza-Fame, Director of Community Development, to present this report for your consideration.
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, we're here today to present to you the three proposals that we received in response to our request for proposal for management of the Alex Theater. And if I could ask the clerk to bring up the presentation, we'll get right to it. In 1992, the Redevelopment Agency purchased the Alex Theater and with the intent of providing a regional performing arts center and rehabbed it. Over the years, the management of that theater has changed and evolved, but I would say from about 2001, there was a group, a nonprofit group, or I should say, a group that then became in 2008 Glendale Arts, which is the current manager of the theater. With that kind of tenure in managing the theater, there are some benefits to get to know the theater, but also the council thought this was an opportune time to see if there wasn't a better way to manage the theater. We just didn't know. And so you authorized the issuance of an RFP. I would just note that the lease and management agreement, the current ones, were extended to June 30, 2021, in order to provide any transition if necessary. The publicly owned theaters, as we've found, are really based on two management models. The first is that something that is more community oriented, community focused, wide diversity of programming, and gets into a more local level. The public entity that owns the facility typically has more influence on the programming and really how that facility is used. However, for that, there is continued financial involvement. This is the model that we see across the country where the public entity does make differing levels of contribution, but that is the main variable, that there is ongoing financial commitment. The other is more commercially driven, where the public entity will either deed a facility or long-term lease and then step away and let the operator do what they need to do to make money. There is very little influence from the public entity on how that programming goes, but, again, there's always that but, it requires very little or no public financial support. We found that over the years, and certainly in the last 15 years, the management of the Alex Theater has been trying to be a hybrid, address and make the theater accessible to the community while seeking to be financially self-sufficient. And to varying degrees, the theater achieves some success at this. However, it is just not a sustainable model, which is important as we get to your goals that have been established. When we came to the council and you made the decision to issue the RFP, we asked and we developed some goals with you, things that we wanted to achieve, and the first, and these are in priority. The first is, really, it's two parts to understand it. Establish consistent financial stability and sustainability. That is, we don't want a model that has wide ranges of fluctuation, where the operator may be coming back to the city and asking us for more contribution, but also a model that can carry on into the future and be sustainable and a viable financial model. All of this while trying to minimize the level of city contribution. So we want something that's stable, that is sustainable, and will go a long time, and we want to pay the least amount of money to achieve that. The second, then, is to provide a cultural facility, performing arts venue, along the lines of what we have today, but with high-quality entertainment clients, events, and performances with great frequency. Again, one of the objectives of the Redevelopment Agency and the City Council's subsequent to that was to have an active facility because of the spin-off economic benefit to local business. In presenting this proposal to the management and venue operator universe, we reached out specifically to 135 different organizations. We sent our packet directly to them. These were venue operators, universities, and government partners, for-profit, nonprofit. We sent them out specifically. We did this nationwide and specifically to the Manhattan area of New York City and Southern California, but we had reached out to groups in Philadelphia, Chicago, and elsewhere around the country. We conducted an eight-week campaign in industry media, LA Weekly, Variety, Polstar, and then we also had a broad presence on social media, where we had some 370,000 impressions. That is, somebody saw that we were out for an RFP. Even more importantly, 3,700 clicks, meaning somebody opened our RFP and at least looked at the first page. We conducted a pre-bid conference with interested parties. Given COVID, we had to severely modify how we did that. And so it was a WebEx meeting, much like this meeting tonight, and we presented and produced a 15-minute virtual site tour using a theater professional, an independent theater professional, that could really go over key elements of the theater, such as the stage, the lobby, the balcony, the marquee, and using GTV-6, we produced a virtual site tour to give people an idea of what the theater is and what they might need to know in order to present a proposal to operate it. We received 43 questions from individuals that we prepared responses to and made those available to everybody, and they were posted so the public could even see. At our pre-bid conference, we had represented eight different organizations. Of those 23 people representing those eight attended that pre-bid conference. As you've seen and you know from the staff report, we received three proposals from SAS, Glendale Arts, and General Admission. Before I go into those proposals, though, I wanted one last word on our promotion and our recruitment for this item. With the 135 packets that went out directly, we followed up and asked, are you considering proposing? And if not, why not? The resounding answer that came back from the national folks was that the Alex Theater was too small, both in terms of its stage area and number of seats, that it couldn't host the typical Broadway show that they would produce on a national level and would require in order to make money. So that's why they passed. When we talked to some of the others, more local, and those that attended the pre-bid conference, really, three items. The uncertainty over COVID-19 and what that means to the performance industry. The second was the city's stated desire to reduce the amount of contribution, financial contribution. And third was a reluctance to bid against the incumbent, and it was just left at that. That could be because of a relationship or because somebody would know the theater so well, and they not so much that they decided not to take the time. But we did have three that proposed SAS, and we'll go through each of them, more commercially oriented, Glendale Arts and General Admission, very much local, community-oriented, with education components, nonprofit components to it. SAS, as I said, is a commercial operator. They would operate primarily as a rental house with their focus on headliner performances, three to four days a week, every week. That generates a critical mass of patrons. Somewhere, if we understood the samples that they gave us, somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,000 to 1,250 people at three to four of those events every week, Thursday through Sunday, with Saturday being the main driver, the main moneymaker night. This proposal had the least amount of detail, but it had enough that we understood what the program was for it. Again, headliner, recognizable bands and performers, comedians, some dance, but that would attract the following. People would recognize it and they would want to go. As I say, it's critical that there's a mass of patrons coming because they are using the facility fee that's generated on each ticket purchased and the concessions that are sold as part of the performance as an important and key element in making this all work. The rate card for SAS, pretty standard across the categories with the other two. However, it was the highest in most categories, 20% to 30% higher than the other two. They do have a discount program, and it's pretty robust in the first year. 20% off their rate card for anybody coming to the theater. This is an incentive to bring performers back to the stage in the wake of pandemic recovery. Going forward, they do have a nonprofit community organization discount of 25%, except on Saturdays. There is also a provision, it's not well described, but I believe there is a one-year waiver for groups to use the theater. That goes along with a negotiated, what they're calling engagement fee, that the city would pay, that would offset those discounts. But it is a discount for community groups. They did not specify whether they would have a resident discount program, although they are counting on the current resident companies to provide the diversity of programming and the things other than headliner performers. They do have experience in managing similar venues. They manage Orpheum Theater and Ace Hotel Theater, both of which are historic theaters in the Los Angeles market. They have booking experience, however, that was 10 years ago at a different theater, the Saban, which is a unique theater, half theater, half synagogue. They booked and scheduled that. At the Orpheum and Ace, there is a third market party that does the booking and then refers to, that they do all the production. They certainly have relationships with all of those groups on the production end, but it wasn't apparent from the proposal, the level of relationship with the booking folks. Glendale Arts, as you might imagine, have the most detailed proposal, given their familiarity, and they already have all of these things produced for their normal operations under our agreements. They are a nonprofit operator. I'm sorry, one last thing before I leave SAS. They currently do not, of course, they're not managing the Alex, so they don't have a nonprofit associated with them, but it is their intent to form one to help with community outreach and fundraising. But their proposal does not require any fundraising for the capital maintenance and upgrade over the years. Glendale Arts. I'm sorry, was there a question?
Yes, this is Mayor Devine. Before you go into Glendale Arts, can I ask my colleagues if they have any questions about SAS' proposal? Instead of waiting until the end when it becomes a little bit more confusing, maybe they have questions now?
I will pause at the end of each one if there are questions.
Yeah, I have no questions.
No one? Okay. All right, go ahead, Mr. Lanza. I'm sorry.
Glendale Arts is a nonprofit operator. They present a wide range of performing arts and opportunity for community groups. Their proposal was 10 years plus one 10-year option. In the RFP, it was proposed a 10-year lease with two five-year options. SAS and General Admission both agreed to that. Glendale Arts has suggested 10 plus 10. And the purpose behind that really goes to naming rights and one of the, part of their proposal in generating revenue. And this would be to give them that longer period of time to sell the right to have somebody's name on some portion of the theater, as opposed to a lesser time which might generate less of a donation. The management fee proposed is $500,000 a year. They do recognize that the city has benefited by COVID and are willing to negotiate that, but their stated fee is $500,000. The capital improvement, much like our current agreement, Glendale Arts has proposed that the city cover some of the building improvements that need to take place over the next 10 years. That is cost estimated at $1 million and a half dollars. They would fundraise for the balance somewhere between $2.5 to $5 million over the next 10 years. Their initial reserve, they would be able to provide, this was a $75,000 reserve amount, they would be able to, as would SAS. The discount program, they do offer discounts to nonprofit and community organizations of 15%. They do have a resident company program where they offer a discount of 35% to them. Experience, their level of experience, they have managed the Alex Theater for the last several years, many years, and they do check that box. Finally, General Admission, a commercial operator. Much like SAS, they intend to form a 501(c)(3) foundation to help with community outreach and fundraising. They, too, would present a wide range of programming. I would say that where they would differ maybe from Glendale Arts is the level of educational-type programming. While that is included in Glendale Arts program, General Admission has a particular experience with that and would bring that type of program to Glendale. As I said, they agreed to the lease terms in the RFP. Their management fee is a little bit staggered. They are asking for $200,000 per quarter while COVID restrictions are in place. They estimate that that would be fully lifted come January. As we look today, the state is seeking to leave what they call the blueprint for a safe state, June 15, which means that potentially there could be more capacity in indoor theaters. So we would just have to wait and see. But their proposal is $200,000 per quarter that they would receive until 100% capacity is allowed back indoors. After that, then their management fee is proposed at $150,000. The capital improvement program, they would fundraise for this. They don't have anything established now, and so if they were unable to meet that, whatever need there was, they would need to, or the city would need to provide that. Ultimately, it's the city's responsibility. That cost estimate is anywhere between $2.4 to $2.7 million. I would say, and I neglected to say this on the other two, although they can provide it. The initial capital equipment, Glendale Arts owns a significant amount of that equipment, and as the owner, that would have to be acquired by another party if another party were selected. SAS has said that they can do that on their own. General Admission would need a loan from the city to do that in making that initial acquisition. Would also say, in terms of the initial reserve, General Admission would need a loan from the city, and then that would be paid back with interest. And I believe the repayment in full is 2023, I think fiscal year 2023. They do offer discount programs of 12.5% to nonprofit and community organizations. Resident companies, a 25% discount. They are community-oriented, and so there would be accessibility to community groups. They have experience at managing theaters, not necessarily historic theaters, but they are publicly owned. They, right now, are managing two of those together, and they have full management of those, including booking. We asked an evaluation committee to look at the proposals. I would note here that the evaluation committee took everything at face value. That is, if it was written there, that they assumed that that was correct, and they left it to staff through due diligence to look at that, to confirm those things. They did not have the benefit of that, whatever due diligence the staff had, and so if they did, some of these may have changed. But the scoring is, as you might expect, in experience, the incumbent scored higher than the others. Program approach, they all had a rational approach to how they would program the theater. As I say, SAS was a little less detailed, and so through negotiation, there'd be much more question of how that would work and their expectations to making that work, but they all had an approach that if all the assumptions were correct, could work. And then, again, as you might guess, and their financial terms and capabilities, SAS is the higher, given that they're asking for no city commitment, financial commitment. In terms of responsiveness, they all scored, and these are the final scores that you have here, 88, 175, 85, and 72. I think when you look at these, the two number-one teams, and I would say that they are virtually equivalent to each other, the points could go any way upon reflection or upon due diligence. If you had one or two different committee members, they're essentially equal. Really, the decision comes to the council as what type of theater do you want to see? If you don't need to have influence on the programming and you don't want to have any financial commitment to the theater, then I would recommend SAS, that that be the model, that you go and we negotiate something with them. If you wanted a community-driven, community-focused theater that had a wider variety of programming and outreach to the community, and that's not to say that SAS wouldn't have that, but that's not the focus. If you wanted that focus, you wanted to have more influence on the theater, more involvement on an annual basis to look at budgets and really check in to see how things are going, then I would recommend to you Glendale Arts. But it really depends on what kind of theater the council would like to see going forward. And this is the time when you can set that vision, and it may be the same as past councils, but it may very well be something different that evolves into a different amenity and a different experience for the city of Glendale. So I don't want it to sound like a cop-out for us, but really, it boils down to this decision for you. In terms of fiscal impact, there's really nothing, there is no fiscal impact directly on today's direction that you give us. Depending on who is selected and the terms that are ultimately negotiated, the impact could be anywhere from zero. If staff says, if staff is able to negotiate an agreement, says, you know what, it's all on you. You go and do whatever you need to do, but it's all on you, up to an estimated $8.4 million, and that's capital improvements and management fee combined. Your alternatives, as outlined in the staff report, really, to give us direction to go start negotiating with one of the proposers here, you could reject all the proposals and give us new direction, although I would note, again, from the first part of the, our management agreements and leases will expire, the extensions will expire June 30. The council could consider any other alternative that we haven't proposed. And with that concludes my presentation. I believe all three parties are here today and able to give a statement. Madam Mayor, if you so choose.
Okay, thank you. Well, I would say that if they are here, I think council should hear from each one of them. Before we have questions, we can ask questions afterwards.
Mayor, I would like to also inform you that I have 19 callers at this time, and when would you like me to stop accepting new calls? And second, would you like to give them three minutes or two minutes each?
No, just let's give them two minutes, and let's stop, let's let them keep coming until we hear from the proposers. So let's hear from the three with a short presentation, please, from each one.
Madam Mayor, there's.
We'll hear the phone calls, yes.
We had indicated to them they could make a statement, so I don't know that there would be a presentation other than, you know, some kind of statement to emphasize their proposals.
Perfect. The brief, the briefer, the better. Thank you. Who's going first, please? SAS, Glendale Arts?
You can take it in any order you'd like. You can take it in any order you'd like.
Okay, let's do SAS first, please, then Glendale Arts, and then General Admission.
Hello, I'm Miles Williams. I'm the founder of SAS, and I think I wanted to start by thanking Philip and his team for their handling of the RFP and for their report. I feel like they got the spirit generally of what we proposed. I do think that a little clarification regarding background and what our vision for the venue would be. So you could see if that's what vision you would like to see happen there. for the venue would be, so you could see if that's what vision you would like to see happen there.
Mr. Williams, can you speak a little louder or get closer to the microphone? We can't hear anything from the send.
You're having a hard time hearing me?
Yes.
Well, let me turn off my video, does this sound better now?
It sounds much better.
Okay, then I'll do that. Okay, so the vision for the theater that we have is also a hybrid. We are a commercial entity, and the venues that we've been involved with, this is our 20th year, all have a sense of both community engagement and of headlining shows, bringing in audiences from a wide demographic of all ages and backgrounds, and providing an experience that would kind of lead towards a more sustainable future for the Alex as we see it. Without that type of programming present, I fear that over the next 10 years, 20 years, we do need to, that millennials and other generations, the younger generations, perhaps need to find their way there, and they need to make the Alex part of their idea of what they can do, come to Brand Boulevard, enjoy the nightlife. That's something that I think I would like to see happen. We would like to see the theater be brought up to a top-tier venue status like the other ones that we've worked on. At the Orpheum, about 40% of our programming is of a cultural, community, and nonprofit benefit shows. So although we do have, same is true at the Theater at the Ace Hotel. Although we do have a lot of experience over 700-some shows with the big promoters here in Los Angeles, we also have much experience doing cultural events, international shows from around the world coming in, independent promoters, and we could see that same vision being a great answer to the three, the three goals as stated in the RFP. We think that that model is probably the best choice. So there are my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, thank you very much. Glendale Arts, is Alyssa Glickman here?
Yes, thank you. Hold on, okay. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm Alyssa Glickman, CEO of Glendale Arts. Thank you so much for giving me a chance to speak. Because today you are being asked to decide a path for not only the vision of the Alex Theater, but the city's arts and cultural landscape, and what our residents truly want for our beloved Alex Theater, and how they see it managed and preserved for generations to come. We are more than the nonprofit management company of the Alex Theater, we are the Alex Theater. Glendale Arts was custom-built for the Alex Theater, and we've exceeded your original vision for us time and time again. We've grown from a local, community-based theater into an arts and entertainment operator and a destination in California. An operator who simultaneously supports high-profile productions, as illustrated in our proposal, while retaining its role as a home to a variety of artists, arts organizations, and patrons that represent the diverse cultures and appreciations that we serve. We have carved out a special and unique niche in our market, in a highly competitive market space, to bring local, regional, and national talent to the venue. And in pre-pandemic times, we boasted over 200 dates a year, generating millions of economic activity, and we personally provided support to countless nonprofit, community, and resident company partners. We work in the intersection of nonprofit, community, arts, and culture. And because of this, we have painstakingly built our nonprofit business, one loyal renter, patron, donor, and constituent at a time. And we, like you, take our role as stewards and preservationists of the 95-year-old venue seriously, as providers to our constituents, curators for arts, culture, and our community. We, I mean, just look at this past year. It's no secret the pandemic has decimated our industry. And while other venues in our market have opted to shutter, we did not. From the very start, we saw ourselves as a key player in the city's post-pandemic success and generated positive media and attention for the Alex and Glendale. We quickly understood that COVID would change our industry, and we fast-tracked plans and secured funding to launch a new multimedia department, increased our contributed income by 40%, secured loans, grants, and funding. But perhaps our biggest contribution to our citizens of Glendale during this crisis was sharing messages of hope, celebration, and inspiration on the theater's iconic marquee and social media platforms, and transforming the theater gates into our wishes for the future. Both received national and community notoriety. You know, we stepped up to the challenge, holding our community together. Our staff was reduced, many of us were not taking a paycheck or working harder, but we developed a plan to harness the power of the arts so that our community could recover together. There is just simply no way to monetize this type of community, this type of dedication and fortitude and commitment, because to us, a vibrant Glendale is priceless. So what's really at stake here, simply put, is the erosion of an entire ecosystem built in service to the Alex and to Glendale. The value of what we do is impossible to fully quantify. But you feel the impact in every corner of our community, from participating in local events and planning citywide events like the Armenian Genocide Commemoration, or Tech Week, or our leadership in nonprofit organizations, presentations and events like Taste Walk, the Illuminate Dinner, last week's Savor, our prized birthday celebration, especially as we enter our 100th year, our collaborations with GUSD and GCC, connecting their students with our staff for a variety of stage and theater internships, our constituents, patrons, and donors' ability to connect with us by just dropping into our office, which is in Glendale, ask a question or buy a ticket. With a long-term lease and management agreement, we are poised to forge new partnerships, expand on existing ones, and bring vibrant and exciting arts to our stage. Because together, we have the power to create the kind of economy that raises everybody up. And no for-profit entity can say that, no matter what. As a resident and a public servant and an advocate for the arts, who's had a passion for the Alex's success for 20 years, I urge you to redefine, to invest in the long-term needs of the community, because this is a defining moment, not just for the Alex, but for all of us. What we envision is a continued partnership that acknowledges the challenges ahead and is ready to redefine arts and culture, because together we can build on our collective legacy or collective success and really build a legacy. So my colleague, Marisa Hockman, is here today, she's the Managing Director of the Alex Theater, and she, of course, is happy to answer any further issues or questions that you have regarding bookings, marketing, and our full recovery plan. Thank you for an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, thank you very much. And now, General Admission?
Good afternoon. My name is Jill Schesell, on behalf of General Admission Venue and Production Management, thank you for inviting us to speak today. We believe our company has hand down your best choice to manage the Alex Theater. Collectively, GAVPM has over 45 years of experience in quality arts producing and programming, and equally strong experience in community building. The council report tells us the city wants a community-driven theater and a financially profitable venture. GAVPM can give you both, and here's how we'll do it. We'll provide the Alex Theater audience with intentional, innovative, and community-interest-led programming, which will, one, expand the current audience, two, increase economic activity in downtown Glendale, and, as important, create a 21st-century Alex Theater. Glendale is diverse. 21st-century audiences want programming that speaks to their many identities. We'll actively engage with all of LA's communities and identities. On day one, we'll reconnect with the Alex Theater's core constituency, and then begin the work of expanding our community of renters and patrons. We will reach out to Glendale's various demographics to ask what they want to see and how they want to engage. We'll offer renters and Alex Theater audiences multiple points of entry, in-person programming, live streaming, podcasting, and community events in the fourth floor. These multiple points of entry will create new revenue streams that will benefit the theater as well as the broader community as our audience grows. So what is a community-driven theater? The Alex Theater's calendar, from our view, currently is filled based on whoever calls to rent the space. That doesn't provide control over the content of the shows that you offer to the audience. While this approach could be seen as community-based, in truth, it's limited to only those groups who rent the theater and their audiences. GAVPM will create our community in a much broader way by first, providing a home for local traditional groups like Musical Theater Guild and Alex Film Society, but then expanding the resident program company program to include emerging, innovative groups like Pop Opera and LA Contemporary Dance Company. Once we establish those groups and their seasons, we'll create, curate new multicultural, multi-generational program, things like an influencer series, where we choose musical artists with substantial followings in social media and livestream each live in-person performance to their fans all over the world. Educational program, we offer to schools in Glendale in person and across the country via livestream. A series of events during the 2020-2028 Olympics, connecting Glendale's Armenian and Korean communities with the Olympic teams from those countries. And we will accomplish all of this alongside the theater's pre-existing rental business. You also want a financially profitable venture, and here's how we can do that. Running a theater requires more than managing individual productions. In addition to our experience on the stage, we have extensive experience with theatrical systems and maintenance, booking, producing, and running high-quality events with top-tier talent, front-of-house operations and fundraising, educational and community-based programming, and successful, transparent relationships with local government. Knowing how to do all these things expertly and efficiently is the foundation of a fiscally healthy theater. Now, I could easily list the celebrities we've worked with, but I think that would be a distraction. It's the agents and producers who manage those careers that matter, the people who will pick up the phone when we call, people like Zach Isner, the co-head of hip-hop and R&B music at William Morris Endeavor, David Binder, Tony winning producer and executive director of Brooklyn Academy of Music, David Turner of Thompson Turner Productions, whose company manages the hit musicals Book of Mormon and Mean Girls, Wendy Roberts, director of operations at Bond Theatrical, which manages touring productions across the country. The city's research said the theater doesn't have the capacity to enable profitability, but building the profitable operation is about finding the right artists that scale to the Alex Theater, and we have the connections and skills to do that. To clarify a few aspects of our proposal, the management fee was conceived in February when the pandemic was at its height. Obviously, it would have to be renegotiated because the conditions and the guidelines from the county have changed, so we acknowledge that. In terms of capital improvements, we propose covering the rest, recovering the capital improvements with restoration and programming fee funds from past years, along with the fees from our first year of operation. If those funds are insufficient, we'll do the work we can afford now and schedule the remaining projects in order of importance when additional funds become available. We believe the city should own the theater's critical infrastructure regardless of who you choose today. The 2.7 million projected capital expenditure is a maximum and will not increase beyond that. In fact, we hope the projection will be lowered once we get inside and assess the situation. With respect to the initial reserve, we're open to revisiting the proposed loan from the city and find a solution that works for everyone. With respect to the rental rate discounts, on top of the discounts to nonprofits, we propose reducing base rental rates from current levels to make the theater more accessible to renters throughout the community, especially as groups recover from the last year. We propose targeting discounts to expand our community of rental clients, increase the number of events, and increase the economic activity in downtown Glendale. We've run 250, 205 events a year, as listed on the council report, but that's really a baseline, that's our starting. Lastly, every theater is unique, whether a new or landmark building. We take our cues from the building itself and follow the rules that govern its care and use. We already have a meticulous maintenance plan mapped out to make sure we address every aspect of the theater on a regular basis. Your vision of a community-driven theater that is financially profitable is eminently doable. With our experience in quality, commercial arts producing and programming, our equally strong experience in community building, and our passion and vision for the future, GAVPM can provide you with everything you're looking for. We believe your choice is quite simple. General Admission Venue and Production Management, thank you so much for letting us speak today and for your considerations.
Thank you very much, thank you. Would my colleagues have questions for the gentleman, or would you, we can go to the phone calls?
I just, Ms. Levine, I have a question. I want to make sure that from general admission, did you say that I read about management fee? You say 200 per quarter, and then at a later time, we've come to 150 annually? 150,000 annually?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I wanted to make sure that this is, but when we, after the COVID is over?
Yeah, as I said, when we crafted this proposal, it was at the height of the big outbreak in February. We imagined not being able to bring an audience into the building until January of 2023, 2022, excuse me. So we asked for the city to make a contribution to get us through those initial, those initial months where we basically had limited, limits in terms of programming. But as I said, because the situation on the ground has changed, we would have to renegotiate all those terms, because it's just, it's just a different environment. And we'll get to that.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Najarian, did you have a question, or you're on mute?
I'm just talking to myself at the moment.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone else can hear me.
I want to share, okay. Well, if I don't have any other questions right now from my colleagues, Mr. Jimmy, and let's go to the phone, phone calls, and please make sure that they know that they have two minutes, and if it begins to become redundant over and over, then we'll take it down to one minute. So how many do we have right now?
We have 18 callers at this point.
Okay, all right, thank you, let's begin.
Aiko Nakasone, Aiko, you have two minutes.
Oh, wow, okay. Hi, my name is Aiko Nakasone. I actually just, I've worked with Jill as a fellow performer in the original Broadway production of Rent, so I have not worked for him, but I've worked with him. And first thing I really want to mention about Jill is that his deep love for the theater and for performing arts is so grand. As a leader, I've observed him to be very confident, efficient, positively focused, and he is, is a great problem solver. As a colleague, he is one of the most generous contributor, he works well with people, he loves and respects community, and his standards for himself and others are compassionately very high. So from a personal perspective, he's just, he's an authentic, one of the smartest and most authentic people I know. He has a talent for seeing reality of the way things are, while having a really grand vision for things that could be possible. I'm just very confident in his ability to lead any theater to success, and I think he's wonderful. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you, Aiko, next?
Jill Kerrigan, you have two minutes, Jill, go ahead.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. I was going to say everything that Alyssa Glickman said, so I'm going to cut to a different point, which is $500,000 per year represents $2.50 per citizen of Glendale per year to have the type of community theater in your historic, iconic, gloriously-preserved Alex Theater. $2.50 per citizen of Glendale. That's, and your $8.4 million represents $50 per citizen of Glendale. I wanted to get those points across, I wanted to say one other thing. I have brought two award shows to the Alex, and the Alex team is the best team I have ever worked with in any theater of the 14 award shows I have executive produced. I had, I tried to bring an award show to the Orpheum, but it was not up to par in either the venue nor the staff. So I wanted to just do that, I don't want to take up a lot of your time, but I'd like to also say, Glendale Arts does everything right. They are the devoted and dedicated and selfless nonprofit steward of the Alex. And you should have all the faith in the world to continue... to continue your, their protection of your legacy for the next 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carrigan. Next?
Gustavo Herrera, you have two minutes. Gustavo?
Good afternoon. My name is Gustavo Herrera, and I'm the executive director of Arts for L.A. We, Arts for L.A., is a community of 70,000 arts advocates with a mission to activate artists, arts workers, and organizations to build a more equitable, healthy, and creative Los Angeles region. Thank you for the opportunity to join this meeting. We're here in support of Glendale Arts and the bid for continued management of the Alex Theater. We support Glendale Arts as an organization that fundamentally understands that the arts are more than entertainment, but a bridge by which a community can connect to one another. Glendale Arts is based in your great city, and we believe that this is of huge value to you as advocates for your city and your small business community that includes nonprofits. We also know Glendale Arts actively leverages the power of the arts to promote civic participation. They've led campaigns to share election information, neutral and nonpartisan, to encourage Glendale community members to get out and vote. It is for all these reasons that we call in in support of their bid for continued management of the Alex Theater. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Kathy Urban, you have two minutes. Kathy, go ahead.
Hi there. I'm here today to lend my support for General Admission, Gilles Chasson, and Adrian Noack. My name is Kathy Urban, and I'm the executive producer for Metropolitan Educational Theater Network, AKA Met2. We are nonprofit educational youth program serving young people from kindergarten through college-age students. At the conclusion of our training program, we offer a live theatrical production for our students in a professional-style theater. We met Gilles and Adrian over six years ago when we moved our performing aspect to the Performing Arts Education Center at Calabasas. Over this time, we have produced over 15 large-scale musical theater productions with this team. Gilles and Adrian have been exceptional to work with through the years. There's never been a time that they have not worked with us to make our time at the theater the best experience possible. They are mindful of our budget, the needs of our company, and have always supported us and our endeavors. They take care and sensitivity in all the aspects of what they do. They are exemplary professionals. Their commitment to the educational values of what we do was unsurpassed. They always took the time to understand not only our mission with our young people, but our commitment to the community to offer outreach performances to the schools at large in our area. With their help, we were able to reach 5,000-plus students and have them come and experience live theater, many for the first time. This was in addition to public performances. As many of you know, live theaters such as ours have been on pause, as we like to say, for over a year. During this time, Gilles worked diligently to help us make a plan as to how we could provide content for our students. He developed with us a livestream show that was not Zoom boxes, but was theatrically produced more like a movie. Adrian was instrumental in helping us with all the details for the live streaming.
Ms. Urban, your two minutes is up.
Their vision helped us so much at this challenging time.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Urban. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next caller?
Esco Norton?
Dear council members, my name is Esco Norton, and I'm speaking in support of the Glendale Arts proposal. I grew up going to the Alex and have focused my professional life on historic theaters. As the past executive director of the L.A. Historic Theater Foundation, I've worked with theater owners all over the county. Every theater is different, but the most common element of success is the connection to the community. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Okay, good. I was getting some feedback. It's easy at the 11th hour for any proposer to say that they can do what any other proposers can do, so let's look at what they're doing now. Glendale Arts has established residence, resident companies that bring people back to Broadway, excuse me, to Brand Boulevard multiple times every year. They program to reflect the diversity of Glendale, and they've interacted directly with local businesses through programs like Taste Walk Glendale. Glendale Arts is respected both locally and nationally, which is one reason that some organizations chose not to make a proposal because they didn't want to compete with Glendale Arts. That says a lot. I want to address the differences between SAS and Glendale Arts from my perspective as a theater historic, historic theater consultant and as someone who has lived both in Glendale and downtown Los Angeles. Downtown is a marvelous bustling area with many beautiful historic movie palaces. I love it, but it's not the same as Glendale. Because of this, the vast majority of programming that SAS has managed at the Orpheum and Theater at Ace is aimed at the transient population, people coming into downtown from elsewhere. There's very little, very little programming aimed at the downtown demographic because as a whole, it's constantly changing. Glendale's very different, with families living here for generations and business owners who live in the community. Glendale knows this community because they are from the community. They have a track record of programming for Glendale. The scores made by the selection committee don't reflect that SAS did not book the shows at their current venues. I bet that would have changed the scores. I have no issues with SAS and appreciate what they do at the downtown theaters. I just think Glendale Arts is a much better fit. In conclusion, I urge you to vote to accept Glendale Arts' proposal and to continue the management of the Alex Theater. It is what's best for the theater and the community of Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norton. Next caller, please?
Larry Isner. Larry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm calling in support of the proposal by general admission. I'm the former board president of the nonprofit Repries Theater Company in Los Angeles. I made two hires at Repries that I'm particularly proud of. In 2007, I hired Jason Alexander as our artistic director, and in 2010, I hired Gilles Chasson as our producing director. Gilles worked with Jason and the board to produce our content in a fiscally responsible manner, including classic Broadway musicals, education events where we brought students from all over the county to see their first musical and celebrity concerts. Gilles was the person responsible for overseeing all our productions, keeping them on time and within his board-approved budgets. Gilles also produced very successful concerts featuring stars including Martin Short and Ray Romano, Barry Manilow, Jerry Seinfeld, and Patti LuPone. When Gilles left Repries to serve as director of operations at the two brand-new state-of-the-art Las Virginas School District Performing Arts Education Centers, which were constructed with $38 million in taxpayer bond money, I served for a number of years on the Citizens Advisory Committee, overseeing and advising Gilles in the school district on the use of the theaters, which included partnering with the City of Calabasas for a number of events. Gilles grew the business to 220 rentals per year, achieving a 330% revenue growth for the school district in seven years. Council members, Gilles is extraordinary. You should be in business with him. Gilles is smart, hardworking, talented, organized. He's a person of enormous integrity and the highest morals. This afternoon, you can do something great for Glendale. You have the opportunity to work with Gilles and Adrian to make your Alex Theater equally extraordinary and a true cultural beacon for your city. I'm excited for your choice. Don't miss the opportunity to hire general admission. Thank you.
Mr. Isner. Next caller?
Patricia Larrigan, you have two minutes. Patricia?
Good afternoon. My name is Patricia Larrigan. For those that do not already know me, I'm a retired Glendale police officer who has previously and continues to volunteer throughout the city. I'm a past president for Glendale Kiwanis and a current Kiwanis District trustee. I'm also involved in the Glendale Alex Lodge. I tell you this to let you know I have a vested interest in this community. I have been part of numerous events and social functions at the Alex Theater for a number of years and have watched it transform and thrive, no matter the obstacles. I have volunteered for high-profile events at the Alex, such as the Elizabeth Warren appearance. I have also been there when the Alex hosted Character and Ethics Ace Awards, High School Productions, Taste Walk Glendale, and the RuPaul Show. The leadership of Glendale Arts has always made it a priority to support local nonprofits like Kiwanis and Rotary since I've been involved. This year, the Alex was even the site for the Glendale Education Foundation Virtual Gala. The Alex is more than a space. It's a city icon, made even more special because of Glendale Arts. Their mission is not only program-oriented and preservation of theater, which they do with high standards, but to be a partner to the city, artists, and the community as a whole. I have seen the staff of the Glendale Arts give their heart and soul to the Alex. Alyssa Glickman and staff are involved in the community continually, participating in community events promoting not only the Alex and Glendale Arts, but the city as the place you want to come to and be a part of. I cannot remember a time when they have not promoted the city to including making sure the Alex marquees shine bright during this past COVID year with holiday greetings, social inclusion, and promoting community safety. The investment the council makes in Glendale Arts and the Alex is an investment that will have a rippling effect for generations to come. Keep the Alex in the hands of the people. Let Glendale Arts continue its legacy of bringing the downtown to life, bringing a diverse roster of events, and supporting the nonprofits, community groups, and service clubs. I can tell you some experience.
Thank you, Ms. Larrigan. Your two minutes is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leslie Schwartz. Leslie?
Good afternoon.
You have two minutes. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Leslie Schwartz, and I would like to recommend general admission. I have had the pleasure and privilege of working with both Gilles Chasson and Adrian Noack for the past six years as a facility coordinator for the Performing Arts Education Centers. During that time, I prepared all the financial reporting for every production, as well as the financial results of the theaters. Gilles is extremely conscientious and fairly and transparently capturing and reporting all revenue and expenses for the theater and for each production. He was an extraordinarily careful steward of the producers and theater owners' funds and resources. When the pandemic shut down the theaters, Gilles immediately began crafting with Adrian a plan for reopening. They devised numerous game plans as the reopening rules continued to change and kept the theater in a ready-to-go mode should the county give us the green light to open. Throughout the pandemic, when in-person theater was prohibited, they advocated for live streaming capabilities, movie production opportunities, soundstage opportunities, all as ways to bring people back into the theater and to create monetizing opportunities for both the theater and the producers. Gilles and Adrian rose above and beyond the challenge presented by the pandemic. I've also been a producer and renter of the theater. During our productions, Gilles and Adrian and their crew worked closely with us to help us stay within budget while maximizing our production value. They offered excellent suggestions to us during the pre-production process and were respectful to our cast and crew. This attention to detail and the care we were given made renting the theater feel like our home. Both Gilles and Adrian have a deep love of the theater. They're both honest and straightforward. They treat their clients and their staff as family, welcoming them into the fold of the theater. This attitude brought back many, many repeat customers. For every event, they take into consideration all the stakeholder needs, the producer, the cast and crew, the audience, theater owner, and the local community. The Alex Theater would be in extraordinarily good hands with Gilles, Adrian, and General Admission Venue and Production Management. I highly recommend them to manage the Alex Theater. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schwartz. Next?
Wilson Germain Haridia. Wilson, you're live. You have two minutes.
Thank you very much. I'm going to make this short and sweet. I'm here to speak on behalf of General Admission and Gilles Chasson. I was with him. I worked with him 25 years ago on the original Broadway cast of Rent, and he's also a friend as well. My knowledge of him is that he is one of the most detail-oriented and intelligent people that I know. And he has always a comprehensive understanding of what he's working with and working about and talking about. He's financially savvy, and he is a highly capable person in order to handle an operation like that. I'm pretty sure that he's working with General Admission not just for it to succeed, but because he has a love, a profound love for the arts, and, and he wants to bring the arts and, and culture to community because at the end of the day, that's what it's about. He absolutely 100% knows what he's doing. He's a fantastic problem solver because he understands the big picture. He can, he can shoot from the hip, but from a very informed place, which is why I trust him completely. Understand that they, their, their vision for this is to have an inclusive experience for education, not just entertainment, but, but to reach out to the community as well. So, because at the end of the day, it's, it's about, it's about people, and people is what he excels at. And that's why I recommend Gilles and General Admission. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please?
Harold Walpert. Harold, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and City Council members. My name is Harold Walpert, speaking on behalf of myself personally, but I am the executive director of Signature Theater in New York and previously managing director of Roundabout Theater Company, where I was privileged to win several Tony Awards. So, I'm going to talk about where the theater is today. COVID, of course, is bringing change and changes in all of our society. Change is what's needed in the performing arts critically. New, bold thinking, vision, and energy. Local commitments, community-based. Last spring, groundbreaking national study, culture and community in a time of crisis, that the audiences are looking for local community mandates, mandates and inclusion. One group brings national expertise as well, a network that will curate specific focus to Glendale, what Glendale wants, with local commitments and, again, local base. That group that will bring bold vision, energy, a depth and breadth of experience, hungry, hard-working, change agent, deeply invested and included, and embedded in the artistic community with a business sense. As Larry Isner said, experience in Broadway, Repries, Calabasas, the full depth and breadth, connected to many people, both artists, managers, agents, all of the people that would need to bring and to make the Alex Theater a great success. But now is a moment for change, and now is a moment for new. And for all of those reasons, without a doubt, General Admission and Gilles and Adrian are absolutely the right choice to make.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Walpert. Next caller?
Elizabeth Congelosi. Elizabeth, you have two minutes. Elizabeth, can you hear me? Mayor, I can put this person on hold and come back to her.
Please, let's move on to the next.
Tam Warner. Tam, you're live? Tam, can you hear me? Tam Warner? Mayor, I can put this person on hold and come back to her.
Please, go ahead.
Rodney Hicks, you're live. You have two minutes. Rodney?
Yes, hi. My name is Rodney Hicks, and I'm calling on behalf of Gilles Chasson and General Admission Venue and Production Management. I worked with Gilles 25 years ago, and we've been friends since. He is one of the most hard-working, caring individuals that I know, and he's filled with such great integrity. His love of the theater and community building is second to none. I have no doubt that he and his business partner, Adrian Noack, along with General Admission Venue and Production Management, will be able to restore, revitalize, and rebirth the Alex Theater for a new generation of theatergoers in the Glendale community. Also to note, Gilles increased the revenue to 330% growth for the Performing Arts Education Centers. And it is none other than Gilles Chasson and General Admission Venue and Production Management. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Next caller?
Patty Woods Goldberg. Patty, you're live. You have two minutes.
Thank you very, very much. My name is Patty Woods Goldberg, and it is my great privilege to offer my strongest support for the bid of General Admission and the management team led by Gilles Chasson and Adrian Noack. I am convinced that the team will be a tremendous asset for the Alex Theater, the city of Glendale, and our entire Southern California community. And I sincerely believe you should take their proposal. I will say, listening to everybody, that this proposal is only as good as the leadership and the vision of the people who present it. And it has been my experience as a patron of the arts, as a season ticket holder at so many playhouses, and as part of the Calabasas Performing Arts Advisory Committee, that everything that they dreamed of and presented to our performing arts community was realized. I would say that they will do you proud. I've watched them research, advocate, and create state-of-the-art I've watched them research, advocate, and create state-of-the-art theaters and learning centers for our district and the local community. They envisioned projects, they vetted them, they acquired top-of-the-line and economic teaching tools and technology. They were calm, encouraging, great listeners, and great solvers of financial and other challenges. I met them when the grounds were just being broken, and because of them, I became on the Advisory Council. They reflect a passion for the arts, concern and compassion for every stakeholder, and have strong communication organizational and management talent. The team will be exceptional in their creative vision and management and execution. From my many years in business, and I have been on many committees and part of the arts community, and I have worked with Gilles and Adrian directly, they will envision and successfully create a wonderful arts and community legacy for the city of Glendale and the Alex Theater. I hope you will choose their proposal, and if you're uncertain about the terms, that you will give them the opportunity to revise it. I look forward to coming and enjoying these productions and your arts and community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Skoberg, next.
Steve Hunt, you have two minutes. Steve?
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Devine, council members and staff. My name is Steve Hunt. I am a longtime resident of Glendale, the president of the Glendale Historical Society, a local nonprofit with over 850 members. I'm here today asking that you consider Glendale Arts for the new contract to manage the Alex Theater. I can remember when the Alex was just a movie theater. I can remember the discussions about the future of the Alex, should we keep it? I know some of the citizens who saved the Alex, and now the Alex is a vibrant center of entertainment, culture, and pride in Glendale. Glendale Arts' history of managing the Alex and bringing many different events to Glendale should continue. Every event at the Alex benefits the community and the downtown area.
Tiffany Nish. Tiffany?
Good afternoon. Tiffany Nish, L.A. Historic Theater Foundation. As you know, our mission is to preserve, protect, restore, and sustain the historic theaters of L.A. County. What you may not know is we advocate for the theater and the building, not the owner nor the operators. Upon review of the proposal comparisons, we encourage council to move forward with the proposals submitted by Glendale Arts. If the annual maintenance is the main hesitation, please negotiate. When we look at the sustainability of most historic theaters, fundraising plays a significant role. They are the only 501(c)(3) being considered, while the other two lists their intent to apply. The missed opportunities and potential grants and institutional giving, the individual donors and community involvement will be drastically lacking under another operator at this time. We all know the significant amount of work historic theaters take. Glendale Arts is the only proposed operator openly committing to any amount, let alone over three times that of the city, to guarantee that the progress already made continues. From backstage expansion to an upcoming extensive tech plan to 1940s neon tower restoration, they are always looking ahead to the next capital project that will continue to raise the bar without compromising the theater's historic integrity. Glendale Arts is also the only proposed operator that has experience managing all facets of the historic theater. Not only do they have the experience, but they have the passion. They love the Alex as though it's their own. They take care of it, provide for it, and plan for its future as though it's their own, and it shows in the CEO and management, the tech team, and volunteers. Glendale Arts isn't just an operator who shuts the lights off and goes home at night. Their entire mission is centered on the Alex, protecting its historic and cultural significance, fostering partnerships within the community, championing the youth by giving them a stage on which to flourish, and leveraging the arts to boost the economic vitality and growth of the district. LAHTF often references the partnership between the city of Glendale and Glendale Arts as a prime example of how a nonprofit and city can collaborate to ensure the success, not only as a theater, but as an anchor to a district and a community. The main reason it works so well is because of vested interest from both the city and Glendale Arts. When we look at all the varying points made in the proposals, LAHTF believes that the Alex Theater's future shines brighter in the hands of Glendale Arts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Betty Porto, you have two minutes. Betty, go ahead.
Good afternoon, council members. This is the first time that I speak on the telephone, I hope. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. I'm here calling in support of, of course, Glendale Arts, as a longtime business owner, coming from two different points. Number one is all the business that we get from the programming that Elisa, Nina, and the team puts together every year, to the, you know, to the fact that I would call the Alex Theater to get a copy of the programs I could staff accordingly. So we do receive a lot of businesses from their programming, and I think they are so involved in making sure that we benefit from it, that we cannot turn away from that opportunity. Number one. Number two, I'm crazy about being interesting, and I had the opportunity of supporting the Alex from the very beginning and enjoyed all the programming that they brought to us, from, you know, all the way from a Moscow ballet to an Armenian dance company to a tango show. So they're, what they bring to the city as far as culture is not something that can be taken lightly. To me, Elisa Glickman and Nina and her team are the heart of the Alex Theater, because the fact that we can access and are so, we can get to them anytime we want. It's like, we're like a big family. So, who wants to break up a big family? We want to keep it the same. And I would say, you know, not taking away Glendale Arts from the Alex Theater would be like Otto's Bakery, getting rid of potato balls. So that would be a big change. Again, one more time, I'm in support of Glendale Arts, Elisa Glickman and her team, and the wonderful job that they have done over the years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Betty. Next?
Anita Gabriellian. Anita, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, staff, and our community. My name is Anita Quinones Gabriellian, and I thank you for this opportunity. I am calling in to voice my support for Glendale Arts and their continued management of the Alex Theater. I am a Glendale resident, I'm an Alex Theater goer, a donor, and a community supporter. In Glendale Arts, we have a true community partner who knows and appreciates our community-based organizations. We are a tale of two cities, the haves and the have-nots, and thanks to the current community-driven model and support from our city, I have seen families who could not otherwise afford to enjoy a theater experience attend and appreciate the arts. I have seen the Alex Theater open its doors to young talent through strong partnerships with our Glendale Unified School District and Glendale Community College. Glendale Arts and their talented and dedicated staff know Glendale and the surrounding community, know arts and entertainment, and they have the experience to continue to successfully operate the Alex Theater and to preserve this jewel in our community for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Anita. Mr. Jermaine, how many more callers do we have?
I have 12 more callers.
Okay, let's take it down to one minute each. And stop and close it down right now. We're taking no more callers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jiro Habeshan. Jiro? You have one minute.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor Devine, council members, staff, and meeting attendees. I'm Jiro Habeshyan. I'm a 20-plus-year Glendale community volunteer, Alex Theater attendee, a financial supporter, and a Glendale Arts Advisory Council member. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today on behalf of Glendale Arts. As you know, many groups call the Alex their home because of the ease and comfort to work with Glendale Arts. There are staff who care immensely about our beloved theater. They practice on their path, community outreach, camaraderie, and relationship building. I recall when the Alex Theater was on life support, and the city almost lost our prized theater. Glendale Arts' leadership and staff created a plan, worked committedly and tirelessly to resurrect the theater and rejuvenate it back to the glory that it is today. I've worked with Glendale Arts and the staff on over 25 events as a performer, event committee member, event producer and stage manager. I've always been welcomed, supported. My meet, met, collaboration, start to finish, was unbelievable. I have similar experiences-
Thank you.
... in doing those kinds of things at the El Rey, the Music Box Fonda, the Dolby, former Kodak Theater, and the Orpheum. The Alex staff and-
Jiro, your one minute is up. Thank you for calling.
Jiro, your one minute is up. Thank you very much. Please remind the callers that it's one minute.
Ted Hoptegaber, you have one minute. Ted?
Hi, my name is Ted. I run a company called Live Talks Los Angeles. I produce, over the last 10 years, about 400 events all over L.A. I've produced events in similar venues: the Foxton Riverside, the Novo, the Microsoft Theater, the Aratani, and the Theater at Ace Hotel. My relationship with the Alex and Glendale Arts started eight years ago when they approached me and made the case for why I should bring events to the Alex. Mindy Kaling, John Cleese, Martin Short, Bert Backrack, Angelica Houston, Terry Gilliam, Chelsea Handler, Phil Jackson, and a few came onboard as well. I'm not familiar with the other organizations bidding at it, so I can just speak for who I do know. I finalized a deal to do three events at the Theater at Ace Hotel with the entity that I believe manages it, Ace Group Los Angeles. It wasn't, unless they are no longer the manager and SAS has taken over. But in any case, having worked with largely for-profit venues, they've been more costly for somebody like me to produce events. It's been difficult to get dates because they often favored larger promoters. My two cents is, while I appreciate the competitors here trying to pivot and have the nonprofits as well or have nonprofit arms, my two cents on that is it's way much easier for a nonprofit to pivot and be more like a business than it is for a business to create a tangent nonprofit. It's an uphill battle.
Ted, your minute is up. Ted, your minute is up.
Still, traffically, it's going to be impossible for them to raise the kind of money from foundations. So all my support is to Glendale Arts.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ted. Next caller, please. You have one minute.
Sir Joni Lal?
Hi, thank you, Mayor Devine and City Council members. My name is Sir Joni Lal, and I appreciate the time to comment on this important issue. I've been a city resident in Glendale for over 20 years, and I'm calling today to voice my very strong support and my deep admiration for Glendale Arts and for their outstanding management team. I myself am a graduate of the Baltimore School for the Arts, where I studied theater, and I do consider myself a proud theater nerd through and through. So I understand the passion and commitment that it takes to maintain and manage and restore a venue like the Alex. Managing such a valuable and visible landmark does take a particular sensitivity to the role of the Alex in our Glendale community. Historic theaters are community treasures, and they are far more than the bricks and plaster that form them. The Alex is a place where our community comes together in celebration and to engage with arts and culture from around the world. Through their expert management of the Alex, Glendale Arts has achieved a very delicate balance between being a regional landmark destination, as well as a local and community-focused venue. I think it's very important that the Alex-
Ms. Lal, your one minute is up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sir Joni. Next caller, please.
Juan Murillo, you have one minute. Juan?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and City Council, I am here to ask you to consider a preventive measure, and that is to not feed the venue to these other promoters. I have over 20 years of experience doing national tours all over the country, including Canada and Mexico. This place is amazing for the community, for the artists. I worked at UCLA when the Veterans Administration took over the Watts Ward because they believed they were going to make more money, and now it's been unoperative for the last 20 years. Don't let that happen to this wonderful facility, please. I would also urge you, if you have time, to see the ends of the facility and how well they are kept for both the patrons and the artists. And I would ask you to see how the other competitors today keep their same facilities. And then you will see that this is the place you want to preserve, you want to keep working with Glendale Arts. They are wonderful, amazing human beings. The operation is impeccable, professional, and I throw all of my support to them. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Murillo. Next caller, please.
Arlene Vidor, you're live. Arlene, go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Arlene Vidor. I'm a Glendale resident and volunteer in the community. The business model, I think, is what is important here. And on page three, the staff report outlines two business models: one is community-based, one is commercially-based. Glendale Arts, unfortunately for them, have been charged with achieving both of these business models, and I think it's pretty amazing that they've been able to do what they do. But I think one of the goals they were charged with in 2007 involved the coordination of resources designed to benefit Glendale-based artists, arts organizations, businesses, and local schools. And this really, maybe at the time, was appropriate, but I think it's now time for them to focus down specifically on supporting commercial top-drawer events at the Alex and making it a sustainable, financially viable organization without that other broad, vague activity included. I wonder, I don't know, if the Open Arts and Music Festival and Taste Walk Glendale and the other things the Glendale Arts Group does is serving to benefit the Alex financially and otherwise. But I think that broad, general, city-wide, and cultural activities are now in the purview of library arts and culture-
Ms. Vidor, your one minute is up. Ms. Vidor?
... and those things should be transferred to that organization and let Glendale Arts or another organization focus on managing the Alex only. Thank you.
Thank you, Arlene. Thank you, Ms. Vidor. Next caller?
Tara Peterson, you have one minute.
Hi, my name is Tara Peterson, and I'm a resident and CEO of the YWCA Glendale. When I first arrived to Glendale, Glendale Arts was the first organization to reach out to me and welcome me, milk me to the city. They made it possible for me to meet key people in this community. And when I needed someone to come in and provide art to children who have witnessed domestic violence and underserved kids in our community, they did not hesitate at all and provided support in kind to our YWCA Glendale participants. Their leadership is not only active and engaged, but also part of every fabric of our community. And they are dedicated to ensuring that art is accessible to all people. They are a woman-led and diverse organization, which we should all be celebrating and uplifting during this, at this moment in time. I urge the city of Glendale to not only select Glendale Arts, but also commit the resources needed to support the Alex Theater. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Next caller?
Susan Hunt, you have one minute. Susan, go ahead.
Hi, pleased to be able to, I was just sitting here waiting, waiting, and here it's my turn already. As a resident of over 30 years in Glendale, and I also grew up in Flintridge, so the Alex has been a part of my life, my whole life. I'm pleased by the other caller, Mr. Kerrigan, who pointed out that it's only $2.50 per person in going and support. It's an exceptional value. I'm glad my tax dollars go in support of the Alex Theater. The support in return that the community gets back from the Alex is substantial. Several no-charge events for the city priorities and community recognition, including last Saturday night's Glendale Educational Foundation Gala on the stage, and certainly with my time from GUSD in support of student activities, like the Student Showcase that was held for several years, giving students the chance to perform on a real theater stage, and of course, having their parents sit in the audience in a real theater as well. And therefore, of course, increasing restaurant revenue and everything else downtown. It broadens the vision of the children and the community at large.
Ms. Hunt, your one minute is up. Thank you.
That went fast. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan. Next caller, please.
Lori Fisher, you have one minute. Lori, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I want to give my wholehearted support for General Admission and Gilles Chasson and Adrian. With their 45 years of collective experience, they will prove to be the change Glendale needs at this precipitous point in history. I first worked with Gilles at the Adirondack Theater Festival, the theater that he co-founded that has been a community stalwart treasure in the Adirondacks for the last 25 years. I'm a writer, and Gilles got my script to the theater where it experienced a sold-out production and ultimately played off Broadway in New York. production and ultimately played off Broadway in New York City. I'm also calling as a teaching artist for the Drama Skills Foundation's New Voices. I'm especially happy that Gilles wants to provide theater and education to understudied communities. I'm impressed by their action plan to do that. As you know, children are the future theater goers that we need, and also theater creates empathy. I've also hired Gilles at New York University where I've worked and taught for the last 12 years, and I mention this because he is a person that knows theater from all angles. So I just want to say, if you're looking for someone who will make the theater money, as someone else pointed out, a 330% increase at the place he worked before, he will be excellent, general admission will be excellent and kind, because they treat people with the passion.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next caller?
Lance Sterling, you have one minute. Lance?
Hi, my name's Lance Sterling. I am the Concert Insider. I own the Canyon Clubs in Agora, Santa Clarita, Montclair, the Saban Theater, Libby Bowl, Starlight Bowl, Oxnard Performing Arts Center. I started my career in 1981, and I am highly recommending the Alex Arts Team. And if you pick them, I will commit to bringing you at least 50 national acts a year that range from Chicago Doobie Brothers Foreigner, Pat Benatar, Stone Temple Pilots, The Hollies, Eric Bellinger, Mike Epps, Beth Har. This is what I do every day, and I know who I can trust and use that can execute the concerts. And I fully support the Alex Arts Team, and I will commit to bringing in 50 national acts. And you can check me out online. I'm sure you can figure out that I actually do 1,700 concerts a year, and have done over 40,000 concerts in my lifetime. Thank you.
Can we get that in writing, Mr. Sterling?
If you pick the Alex Arts Team, I've already spoke to them about putting something...
I'm kidding.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you so much. Thanks for calling.
All right.
Next caller?
Dave Dennis, you're live. You have one minute, Dave. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Dave Dennis. I'm the president of Ben's Town, and we're a relatively small company. We did about $5.9 million last year. And the reason why we moved to Glendale five years ago is because of Glendale Arts. I had the luxury of meeting Maria at a Glendale Young Professionals Club, or a party, I should say, and she convinced me to move my business here and my 28 employees because of everything that Glendale Arts has done for our community. I also live here, and I'm a huge proponent of Glendale Arts. Actually, right before the pandemic hit, I was going to put my money where my mouth is and was about to make a donation for a new sound system. So that's how much I believe in everything that Maria, Nina, and Lisa is doing at Glendale Arts. So go Team Glendale Arts.
Well, thank you, Mr. Dennis. Next caller?
Tam Warner. Tam? Tam Warner, you have one minute, Tam.
Mayor, this is the second attempt with Tam Warner.
Yes, let's...
Disconnect.
Okay, just, how about Elizabeth? Have we gotten to her?
Elizabeth, you have, Elizabeth, you have one minute. Elizabeth? Can you hear me? Elizabeth?
No answer?
No answer. Mayor.
All right. Is that, was Mr. Dennis then the last caller?
Elizabeth will be the last caller.
Oh, is she still on?
No, she's not, not anymore. I have no more callers at this time.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you to all the callers. We, all of us appreciate your engagement in this very important decision that the council is about to make. So now I will take questions or comments from my colleagues.
I have a question, just...
Okay, Councilmember Najarian.
I mean, it's not really to the merits of this proposal, but it's to the city attorney. I mean, I feel a little uncomfortable when someone says if you vote for some particular organization, I'm going to do this and bring this in. That can't be right. I mean, there's got to be something.
Mr. Mayor, members of, Madam Mayor, excuse me, and members of council, I don't think that was an offer of personal benefit to council members, but for the proposal for the city. And I think, you know, and again, I think he was, I'm not sure it was taken seriously from the council members.
Maybe he was being facetious.
Two, but there were two, two different offers.
Sound system?
I just felt a little uneasy with that, but...
I, yeah, I wouldn't take it as part of your consideration for this item.
Correct.
Councilmember Najarian.
Exactly. Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Okay, who would like to begin? Councilmember Agajanian.
You're on mute.
Are you on mute? Mute?
You're on mute, Mr. ...
On mute? It's okay. Happens to all of us.
This is mute to me because I was inside the hall. I didn't do this for almost a year or exactly over a year. So that's why sometimes I may forget to unmute myself. But however, I asked our employees, our staff, to compare, you know, the money-wise. I'm looking at page 10. I didn't get anything. But however, I look at the page 10. This is not an issue of that whether we want community-focused theater or we want commercially-driven theater. I do not look at it that way. We can achieve both by, let's say, for an example, on page 10 of 47, it says, underneath it says 81. I don't know if it's clear what, which page I'm talking about or not, but however, there is this chart, which there are three companies, they put them side by side, and there are figures there. I don't know if my colleagues can see that page 10 of 47, or page 81, it says on the bottom. So as I said, this can be achieved to have community-focused and commercially-driven theater. For one, when I asked, of course, I didn't see the figures, but I was asked, okay, what happens that SAS doesn't give the hall to anybody, although it says here 25% discount they are offering to nonprofit community organizations? But I was told no, that 25% they're not offering except Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. I don't know if that's correct now or not. But however, let's assume SAS is not giving any discount even. When I look at Glendale Arts, over there, they say there is 15% discount, the hall is 3,500. SAS is offering $3,750. If you take the 15% off of 3,500, which is offered by Glendale Arts, then the theater, the nonprofit can get it for $2,975 versus SAS, which is 3,750. The difference is approximately, exactly, actually, if that 3,750 is correct, of course, which they are telling me, and SAS is not giving any discount, the difference is only $775, something in that range. Now, if, let's say, the city would say, so the difference, again, I repeat, $775. If you take 40 days of the hall from, let's say, SAS, 40 by 750, $775 will be approximately, let's say, $30,000. So we have the nonprofit to get the hall by, you know, investing 30,000 or 40,000, and we can have nonprofits there to perform based on whatever, let's say, Glendale Arts is offering, and we will not be obliged, or we don't have to pay $500,000 per year to have that theater. So money-wise, these offers are not even comparable. But when you look at, by saying this is community-focused, the other one is commercially-driven, I'm not agreeing to that. We can make it the way we want it with the less money we have to spend, because the point is that the theater should be self-sufficient as far as the money is concerned. We cannot continuously do the same thing over and over again and expect different results. This is what, you know, Einstein said that. So I agree with that. There should be some changes in this theater. It should be self-sufficient. I'm not talking about right now when the COVID-19 is ruined everything. But however, to go forward, I cannot compare the two offers. And that, of course, one more thing about general admission, I couldn't really figure out, but one thing I realized today, that they're asking that on a normal condition, they will ask only for $150,000. So that's also an offer that I would consider. But as far as I'm concerned, we should not spend lots of money. If somebody comes forward and will provide alternative solution, they bring forward to spend very little money and accomplish to have, as I said, to have community-focused theater and commercially-driven theater, they are not separate issues. We can have both of them combined, and we should not spend $500,000 per year on this theater. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Agajanian, council member. And next colleague would like to go next? Mr. Najarian? On mute?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the, you know, one of the concerns, one of the main concerns that we as city council has had for a decade or longer has been the amount of contribution that the city has had to make towards the operations of the Alex. And every year when the Alex report comes in, we're always emphasizing that we'd like to get away from our contribution. We'd like the management to be as self-sufficient as possible. It's a theme that was, that has been played, at least for the 10, over 10 years, going back. We, we were very encouraged, not perhaps a year before last, when our subsidy was down to, I think it was around $150,000, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere around there. And we applauded the Alex. We really were happy and congratulated them in their efforts in doing that. Now, unfortunately, we're getting this proposal where we're up to $500,000, which is more than, than I can remember going years back. And I'm not, and I'm very disappointed that, that being fully aware that the city's contribution was a, if not the main issue, a major issue in the continuing operation. We get this number that's just out of the ballpark. These two new applicants that are coming in, SAS and General Admission, are, you know, hundreds of thousands ahead of that. SAS doesn't want any operating subsidy. General Admission says, you know, once we get on our post-COVID track, it's $150,000. That's a, the subsidy is a very big deal to me. I think that the nature of the programming, the cost to the community can be dealt with, if not exactly in the way Mr. Agajanian explained, in a way similar, where we could subsidize the nonprofits and the local groups with a certain amount. And if his calculation is to buy down and subsidize, he gave the example of SAS down to the discount level that the current Glendale Arts is giving for 40, 40 nights, it's approximately $30,000. I mean, even if you do that, we're still, you know, way ahead of the game. I, I mean, I'm just, I was very, very surprised when I saw that it was going to be $500,000 a year subsidy for Glendale Arts. And that's the biggest, I mean, they do a very good job running it. I've worked with them on several productions, namely the April 24th, but I just can't swallow the $500,000. And so I, I really, that's a huge blow to me. And I, I would have thought that they understood that that was a serious issue for council. It has been a serious issue for years. So I'm, I mean, I'm, I heard a lot of good things from the general admission folks. They had a lot of great testimonials. SAS looks very good on their application, on the types of acts that they bring in. So I'm leaning more towards those two at this point. The financials are very important to me.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Najarian. Councilmember Kasakian or Brotman, who would like to go next?
I'd like to hear from Councilmember Kasakian.
Hearing none? No. Hearing none? Yes, Mr. Kasakian?
Sure. No, I want to thank staff for the work that they put into this and for presenting this report, for going through this exercise. Certainly, it wasn't something that I necessarily thought that was absolutely needed, but especially given the timing, but I know that the way the contract was structured and when it would run out, and given some of the concerns of my colleagues, it just happened to coincide with when we had a global pandemic that has decimated the arts and entertainment, including the unfortunate news of one of our marquee and one of our only movie theaters shuttering. You know, but here we are. The proposals were compelling, and each of them had their strong points. As a right entity to run the theater has to have, in my opinion, a relationship with the community. I know that there's this issue that Councilman Braga Janian raised regarding the dichotomy of profitability versus working with the community and it being either or, and it shouldn't be that way. But the reality of it is, because, as I've said on numerous occasions, we have a theater that just, and as has been stated, and I'm sure others, professionals, I mean, we've seen some of the reasons why other folks did not want to submit proposals. It is a theater that has its limitations in terms of its size, its capacity, what kind of shows it can accommodate because of the size of the stage, and also the fact that it happens to be located in a very competitive market where within a few miles, there are significant other options to choose from. So for me, the ultimate underlying factor is what relationship any entity has with the local community. We have a very unique composition here in Glendale that makes us different than other communities, and I believe that the Alex has come a long way to help make itself a part of this community and serve the community, and most importantly, work with the city to provide the type of programming and events that I believe are in line with what we as a council... programming and events that I believe are in line with what we as a council, what the community has come to expect. That's not to say that the other applicants would necessarily not be able to do that, but there's going to be a learning curve. And they certainly have demonstrated, and of course, when anyone applies for a job and you ask them, what is your greatest weakness? They'll say, I'm a workaholic. You know, I'm too organized. I will do everything that takes to get the job done. I appreciate what the other proposals state, but I see the entity that has a track record, the proven track record. There is the issue of the subsidy, and I do think that there are certain things that Glendale Arts can certainly do better. But I think part of the issue has been that we as a council have to perhaps be more direct and clear as to what we expect them to do and where they need to expend their energies and resources in order to make the Alex Theater less reliant. One of the concerns for me was the fact that Glendale Arts does point out the fact that there need to be certain expenditures for improvements to the theater. And I don't believe, I know that there was a virtual walkthrough done with the other two applicants or proposers, but I don't think anyone has actually necessarily been in there to do a careful analysis, to see what the needs are, to see what the bones of the theater are. And I'm confident that Glendale Arts, having run this and knowing the facility intimately, knows what the improvements are that are needed. I don't necessarily feel a need to change direction at this point. I do think that Glendale Arts is doing a fine job, although I would like to see them be open to the suggestion of an option of the 10 years with two five-year renewals versus 10-year, 10-year. In terms of where we are as a council, I think we have to decide for ourselves in terms of what investment we want to make in the arts and also what sort of clear direction we can give. And I would like to see our Arts and Culture Commission perhaps take on this role of diving into this and giving some direction as well from their perspective. Because certainly, I don't know what it takes to run a theater, but I do know one thing that running a theater, a facility, or even a theater group for that matter, is not a highly profitable venture. Otherwise, more people would do it. It's very difficult. It's a very difficult go of it. And what I would hate to see is for us to lose such an iconic institution like the Alex and have it fall by the wayside because, you know, groups said that they could do it, they promised us sun and moon, and then were not able to deliver, and we set them up for failure. So that's where I'm at, Madam Mayor and fellow council members. I may have a few more comments as thoughts come back to me, but that's what I have to say for it now.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Brotman?
Okay. Thank you. Am I, yeah, I'm on. Okay. I have two pages of notes here, but I'll try, I'll try my best. So first of all, just going back to this process, we originally had a, you know, a request to do a simple extension, and we were discussing whether that should be, you know, three years, five years, or 10 years, if I remember right. And some of my colleagues said, let's, you know, let's take a pause and, you know, hire a consultant, do a review of the financials, and let's see whether this, you know, continuing with Glendale Arts is going to give us the best bang for our buck and do, you know, do the best service to the Glendale community. And I didn't, you know, at first I thought, you know, why are we doing that? But having, sorry, my phone is ringing here. And I can't turn it off. There we go. Sorry about that. Having read the consultant's report, and I, you know, and I think the public may not know that two of us, Councilmember Devine and I, had to step out for a long period of time because of conflicts. In any case, I think that the process that we went through was very positive. I got a lot out of reading the consultant's report. And so I actually do want to thank my colleagues for kind of taking a pause, taking a breath, and doing a deep dive. I think that's been positive. I think wherever we end up, we'll be in a better place than we would have been had we not done that. So I just, I wanted to kind of put that out there. I think, you know, we've asked Glendale Arts to do the impossible. We've asked them to be this, you know, community-oriented venue, but also to be financially independent. And we've kept them on a tight leash as far as contract extensions. And I think under those difficult circumstances, they've served us pretty well. I think, and clearly, they have a strong loyal following here in Glendale. I believe that if we give them clear and realistic guidance, they will execute to our, to our direction. I, and so, like Councilmember Kosakian, I am definitely leaning towards working with Glendale Arts, continuing to work with Glendale Arts. Having said that, I think that I would like to see some things done differently. I think it's possible for us to have a hybrid between a kind of commercially-focused and a community-oriented venue. And I would like to see us turn the dial a little bit in the commercial direction. I believe that we can and should have more kind of, what was the term that one of the callers used, top drawer events. I would like to see more of a range of shows that are going to bring audiences, diverse audiences into Glendale, fill up the theater, drive more spending at our restaurants, maybe things a little bit more edgy or more kind of provocative, emerging types of performances. And I think that that's some direction that I would, I would like, you know, staff to work with Glendale Arts on if we do go with them. I know one of the callers mentioned something about, you know, focusing solely on the Alex, and I tend to agree with that. I think that if we do go with Glendale Arts, I would really like to see them focus exclusively on the Alex, on programming the Alex. I do think it's a valid question as to, you know, why, why we do Taste of Glendale, why we do the Open Arts and Music Festival. I mean, these are good activities, and I think a lot of people in the community enjoy them. I'm just kind of wondering why this is something that Glendale Arts would do as opposed to doing it through our Library Arts and Culture, for instance. So I would like to see them more focused on the Alex. I would like to see them bring in more top drawer talent. But I think that they have proven themselves here. They're integrated into the community. I think that they will do what we ask them to do, and I think they will do it well. I trust them. I have faith that they can deliver. So that's where I would be. Now, I mentioned, you know, about the performances. I think that putting them on a longer-term contract, and this is coming from the consultant report, should allow them to do more with fundraising and attracting, you know, high-dollar donors. And I think that if they do that, and if they do shift into a little bit more of a commercial direction, I think they can potentially reduce their dependence on the city for financial contributions. And maybe we can create some kind of a model where we, you know, we kind of share in that financial performance. So if they, if they outperform, then we somehow have a mechanism where we ratchet down the amount that they contribute to the city, not the entire amount that they outperform. Make it something that both sides have incentives to achieve greater financial performance. So I'd like to see us look into that. And I also just, I'm just about at the end, but it was interesting that Mr. Sterling, who I don't know, called in and he kept calling them the Alex Art Team as opposed to Glendale Arts. And I think with a greater focus on the Alex, or a primary focus, or a sole focus on the Alex, it would make more sense for them to be the Alex Art Team, or something, or Alex Art. And I think that kind of laser focus and maybe expressing that through the name would be a good direction. So those are my comments. I would, I also, you know, note that our Library Arts and Culture organization has not, as far as I know, played a significant role in this, and I don't think our Arts and Culture Commission has played a role in this. And I think that, you know, hopefully, we can make a selection today. But moving forward, as we work with whoever we choose to, you know, nail down contract terms and set direction, I would really like to have both the commission and our Library Arts and Culture organization involved in that, because I think they can bring a lot of expertise to these questions. I think that's it. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Brotman. Well, I want to thank all of the proposals, proposers. They all kind of shed a different light on the Alex Theater, different, but yet the same. But there were some new comments that I truly appreciated, that the, we have to attract younger audiences, want to be a top-tier theater. We want to, we can focus on the commercial, bold thinking, and that's what we need. We need bold thinking. Now, I have a question, if Alyssa Glickman is still on the line?
Yes.
Alyssa, I think it was Ms. Vidor that made mention of the fact that you were, possibly had lost money on your festivals or your dinners, some of your big events. That would be something that I would be interested in looking at and perhaps eliminating from your catalog of events. Is that true, that you did lose funding? You're on mute, I think.
Oh, thank you so much, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. I appreciate you giving me an opportunity to speak on that. The Open Arts and Music Festival was originally presented as an RFP by the Arts and Culture Commission. We answered that RFP in the first year and received funding for that. We did not receive continued funding for the Arts and Culture Commission as they were working on their own work plan, and they were starting to figure out how to incorporate more of their funds into other programming. As a result of COVID and as a result of our strategic planning, we have not put a tremendous focus on bringing the Arts and Music Festival back. And if, I know you all read our proposal with great enthusiasm and vigor, but really, our focus over the next 10 years is the Alex Theater's recovery. And that was a tremendous cornerstone of our proposal and our, and the strategic direction that we have decided to take, not only as a result of the pandemic, but where we see the future of our industry headed. Now, we talk a lot here today about a subsidy, when, again, in our proposal, we were quite clear that it is a fee for service. And so we have, for the last two years, proposed two key elements. If the city of Glendale would like us to continue to manage the venue in the vision that we currently manage it in, there is a cost to managing that venue. And we have assessed that cost at $500,000 a year. We've based that on market rate, and we've looked at other venues, including the Fox Riverside, which is managed by Live Nation and receives a $500,000 management fee for the privilege and the right to do so. So also in our proposal, while this, we fought hard for that 10-year long-term agreement, and while we respect the two five-year terms, we suggested and asserted in our proposal that at year eight of our 10-year deal, we would like to revisit those two five-year terms. And if everything is going to plan and everyone is happy with the direction that the Alex Theater and Glendale Arts are moving in for the city, we then opt to extend for another 10 years. That gives us that longevity that we have always craved and have needed in order to sustain the organization, the way you have provided us with a vision, and we have carried that vision through. So I wanted to be really clear on those two points. The Taste of Downtown Glendale, just to get back to your original question, is a fundraiser. It was originally conceived by Glendale Healthy Kids. When Glendale Healthy Kids was no more, we took it over and grew it, and it was on its way to being one of our largest financial contributors to both Glendale Arts and Alex Theater programming. When the pandemic hit, we quickly pivoted that to what became our Savor event, brought all of those events online, incorporated our Illuminate Dinner, which raises money to restore and ongoing maintenance to the tower and the marquee. And we brought that all online. What Taste Walk Glendale, what Savor is going to look like moving forward, we just don't have any idea. But what we do know is that these are fundraising brands that we as an organization just don't plan because they're fun and they seem like a good time. They're very specifically targeted to raising money for the Alex Theater to offset any economic subsidies that we provide to our nonprofit clients. So I hope that that clears up a couple of questions and concerns that were raised here today. One of the largest points that I just want to drive home, since I do have this opportunity, is, you know, a lot of the details are in the negotiation. Mr. Lanzafame was very clear that one of the competitors, SAS, was really a little short on the details, whereas our proposal was obviously big on the details because we have the most experience. Our other competitor, General Admission, received a score in the 70s, and yet somehow was brought into today's conversation because you needed perhaps a secondary community group to evaluate. There is no one who can do this job better, and all of these minor details can be worked out during the negotiation process. We presented a proposal that we thought was solid and had a good business backing and really presented a vision for the future, and all of the things that all these groups said that they could bring to the table, high-quality acts, access to millennials, while still staying true to what we do at our core, which is focus on the community and the preservation and maintenance of the venue. That's what we do. That's what you created us for, and that is the legacy that we hope to continue together. Thank you for an opportunity to rebuttal.
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, I think the lack of proposals shows how difficult it is to run a local theater like this, a historical landmark. Councilmember Najarian, did you want to make a comment or ask?
Well, I don't know if anyone else wants to talk, but, you know, the financial is very critical to me. And if my colleagues want me to go to their side, I want them to explain to me why in 2018, our subsidy to the Alex was $150,000, and now we're subsidizing them over three times that amount for a period of 10 years. Someone explain that to me, my colleagues. And I'll vote with you. If you tell me why we're doing that, you can convince me. But this is such a glaring issue, I can't believe we're just glossing over this. It's not fair to our community. We've got financial responsibilities, and explain it to me. I'm willing to listen.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Ms. Glickman, is there a way that we can negotiate that down?
Again, this was our proposal, and as we very clearly stated in our proposal, and as Mr. Lanzafame articulated, we understand that we're in a difficult time, and we certainly are open to negotiations. The larger discussion is here today, what is the city's vision for the future, and what do you want us to keep as a part of what we do to provide you with outstanding service, outstanding preservation, outstanding stewardship, and an ever-evolving and growing programming? programming offering? And then as we start to book...
Madam Mayor, I apologize. Kind of a point of order here. I think Councilmember Najarian asked feedback from his colleagues, not from the proposers. So unless, I think unless you have questions, you know, or if you have for the questions of any of the proposers, since you haven't had a chance to weigh in yet, I think now is the time for deliberation by the council.
Okay. Did anyone else have a question or a comment?
I can try and respond to Councilmember Najarian. I think his point raises a valid one. Certainly, I would also ask him what has happened during the last hour-long, it is, let's say, over 10 years that has taken us down this path, but let's also not forget that we have other assets in the city that have also cost a city repeatedly money, not the least of which is another auditorium, the Civic Auditorium, right, that has constantly been the money pit in terms of what the city has done to keep it up and maintain it and try to find different uses for it. Now, is it ideal to have to put in that amount of money every year into the Alex? No, hopefully we can work to, you know, chip away at that and minimize it. But I do think that there is some obligation that we, as a city, have to have in investing in our arts and our only true real performing arts facility. If we don't want to have one, then, you know, sure, let's consider getting, washing our hands of it and being done with it, but then where do we have all of our city's marquee events? Where do we have our April 24th event that we have every year? Where do people come and do their performances? So, you know.
I mean, that's, with all due respect, that's a red herring. No one is saying that we're going to close the Alex Theater. No one is saying that, I mean, in the, a comparison to the Glendale Civic Auditorium, no one has given us a proposal where they would continue to run it and operate it without any subsidy for us. So those two comparisons are not, I'm not on point. I mean, I'm not saying close the Alex, and I think every one of the applicants here is gonna, they know that April 24th is a date that's going to be there, and we're doing this to keep the Alex Theater open and keep the arts alive and vibrant. And some of the acts and the programming that these other, these other proposers gave were very exciting, and I can't remember the last time I had an exciting, an exciting event at the Alex. And don't tell me Elizabeth Warren. That doesn't excite me.
I won't tell you Elizabeth Warren. I'll tell you...
Okay. Someone told me that's the other guy.
But you know what? I mean, that's all subjective. My kid may like Baby Beluga, others may not. That's the nature of art. I mean, we have art exhibitions now on Arts Off Street that some people like, some people don't. That's the nature of it. What I do, one of the suggestions I did hear from my colleagues, Councilmember Najarian and Mayor Devine, is that I would like to see our Arts and Culture Commission involved in this process, or at least in, with Glendale Arts more directly, so there's a synergy across all of our arts-related bodies. So anyways, that's my thoughts.
Mr. Brotman, did you have any other comments to make?
Yeah, I might, let me, let me jump into this debate a little bit. I mean, I, I get what you're saying, Councilmember Najarian. I think, I think you get what you pay for, and I think it's up to us to define what we want and what we want Glendale Arts to program. I think that we can spend more or less, depending on the direction we give. I don't believe any of the other groups that have presented here today, that submitted proposals, who are, I'm sure, very high-quality organizations, but I don't think they have any kind of special magic potion that they can come in and run things at a much lower cost than Glendale Arts. You know, and the consultant report, you know, does indicate that Glendale Arts is running a very financially sound operation. They're doing well. There were no, there were no concerns that were raised about how they're, how they're managing their activities financially. So I think everybody's going to be facing the same constraints as far as, you know, what that venue allows, what does it cost for upgrades, what does it cost to run an organization? I don't think anybody is going to be, you know, kind of coming in and waving a magic wand and being able to do something significantly different. I think we sit down with Glendale Arts, we talk about what we, what we want them to be, what we want the Alex to be, we decide what that's going to cost, we look at those trade-offs, and we make a decision. And that, anyway, that would be, that would be my, my thought process on it.
Thank you. Madam Ragajanian, yes?
I don't understand. We have three offers in front of us. You're going far away and, you know, there are three offer in front of us. One is says, I don't want anything. One is say, give me 500,000. The other one says 150,000. You're talking about this. No other issue should be now discussed. As I compared, we can have whatever Glendale Arts is offering as far as nonprofits and other stuff that they are giving to nonprofits with almost 30, 40,000 dollars. We can provide the venue to those nonprofit organizations. Why would we give 500,000 dollars for years? This never happened, at least in recent memory, at least. And what happened, that all of a sudden we became this generous, generous organization? Money doesn't matter to us. Let's give 500,000. Let's Glendale Arts to manage it, because they have been here, so it's already, it's theirs. I mean, that I don't understand. Look at these three offers. One is saying zero. With 4,000, 30,000, we can buy whatever the haul, we can buy it, give it to nonprofit for a cheaper price. And of course, this is based on what they told me, that SAS wants 3,750 dollars from nonprofits, and Glendale Arts wants 2,975. Although SAS on the offer, it says 25% discount for nonprofit, but let's assume there is no discount for nonprofit, still doesn't make sense to me. I mean, how you, we are so willing to give the money away, on what basis? I mean, you can have the same thing. It's not that somebody came forward and says, if I want, if you want me to run this theater, give me 500,000, otherwise it's not possible. Then would be different. Then I would say, oh, I have no choice. We want to have Alex Theater to operate. We want to, organization, Glendale organization, or wherever, we have to spend money for arts and anything to do with arts, but this is not the situation. There are people came forward who are running theaters, general admission, and they say, yes, they're running other venues, and they are not in Moon or in different countries they are doing this. They are in here, in Los Angeles. They're familiar with this communities. They are familiar with what's going on around us. And then all of a sudden, we are so generous to give 500,000. It's really beyond me. How you guys can say that? Thank you.
You're welcome. Of course, I hesitate to say this, but, and I know Ms. Councilmember Najarian probably knows where I'm going to go with this, but we have given 500,000 dollars for a program for two months and thought nothing of it. And so to give them, offer them 500,000, but I'll, let me tell you where...
It wasn't this, no, no, the skating rink was 150,000, and it was a one-time deal. It's not locked into 10 years.
That's true.
20 years.
So here's, here's where I...
20.
I come down on this. I agree that there's something to be said for community, concentration on a community with our theater, with the Alex Theater. I also agree that it should be the Alex Theater and not the Glendale Arts. I think there has to be a definite separation. I think this theater needs to concentrate on top-flight events, top drawer, as was mentioned by, I think it was SAS, attract the millennials, do a better job of that. There are ways that they can, they can approve. I would, I would be in favor of giving this contract to Glendale Arts if they would come down to, and Mr. Garcia, if I'm in the wrong here, let me know, if they would come down to 250,000 a year. If we can negotiate them down to 250,000 a year. Mr. Lanzafame, do you have any thoughts on that?
So Madam Mayor, I think what, if I can just frame the question, I think what, what the proposed directive is for, for the city to enter into negotiations with the Glendale Arts Group and to work on the price component. Mr. Garcia, did I, is that, am I understanding Ms. Devine correctly?
I think, Councilmember Najarian, I think that's a fair way to frame the issue for discussion, is who do you want to enter into negotiations with for the lease and management agreement? We have terms that are in the, that were in the proposal. You have, you know, a number of selling points that I think you all want to address, and some of these points will have to be addressed with staff, kind of going back and forth with whoever, whoever the selected operator is. So that would be my suggestion, is for the council to focus on who you want to negotiate with further, on some of the points that you've raised this afternoon. Provide that direction, and staff will, you know, obviously reach out to whoever the operator is, and then, and then be able to bring for, I suspect there'll be a number of future follow-ups with the council that we would have to bring back to you for further discussion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Garcia. All right. So then, I would be leaning then towards the Glendale Arts and with a change in name and focus and all of the other issues that we discussed. So I guess at this point, we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Brot, Councilmember Brotman?
So I'll make a motion that we direct staff to negotiate with Glendale Arts for a 10-year contract with a, with an extension period to be determined, either two, five-year terms or a 10-year term, or a formula that Glendale Arts just suggested, which is maybe, maybe a checkpoint after eight years, and then we decide what that extension is going to look like. To negotiate based on the direction that all of us have given here, which, you know, clearly there's an interest in reducing our financial commitment and a number of other things, I won't go through them, but a number of other things that we've mentioned, I would like to just add that I would like to bring the Arts and Culture Commission into, not necessarily the negotiations themselves, I don't think that would be appropriate, but into, to provide, bring it to them to provide direction in terms of what they would suggest for making the Alex, you know, the best it can be for Glendale. So that would be my motion.
Is there a second? Councilmember Kusakian?
Earl, second.
Second. Roll call, please, Mr. Ajimian.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Agajanian?
Absen.
Yes.
Najarian?
Present.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes. And what is next?
Next would be adjournment.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Second, we are adjourned at, I'm not sure what time it is. Does anyone know?
4:46 PM.
4:30. 4:46. Thank you very much. And so then we move on to the City Council for closed session. So I'll call to order the Glendale City Council for April 20th, 2021. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Here.
Agajanian? Councilmember Agajanian? Kusakian?
Yes. Here.
Najarian? And Mayor Devine?
Yes, here. And what's next, Mr. Ajimian?
Well, we'd be closed session. One, a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure litigation present to paragraph subdivision D2 and E2 of section 54956.9. One potential case.
Madam Mayor...
Mr. Garcia, do you expect to have a report out?
Madam Mayor, with respect to this item, yes, we do anticipate reporting out on one of the items, and just for the record and for purposes of the minutes, the matter that's on this closed session agenda related to potential litigation pertains to a dispute between the City of Glendale and Glendale Community College regarding the applicability of a standby rate to a fuel cell project proposed by GCC and a conflict waiver related thereto. So at this point, Madam Mayor, we can recess into closed session.
Thank you. We are recessed to closed session. Thank you.